The Excellency, the Governor-General of Antigua and Barbuda, my friend, the Prime Minister of Antigua and Barbuda, the Honourable Gaston Brown, colleague heads of government and state, the Honourable Lead of the Opposition, my very dear friend too, Baldwin Spencer. I have friends on both sides in Antigua. I want you to believe that. I believe Robin might be with me tomorrow having breakfast at Galley Bay. I want to acknowledge the President of the Senate and the Honourable Speaker of the House of Assembly, the Honourable Chief Justice of the Caribbean Court of Justice, the Ministers of Government, Heads of Delegation, leaders of regional integration organisations and other regional bodies, and your Excellencies, members of the Diplomatic Corps, ladies and gentlemen, and children of our Caribbean civilisation. First, congratulations are in order to the people of Antigua and Barbuda and the irrelevant state institutions for yet again being fully engaged in the democratic exercise of choosing a government through free and fair elections. I congratulate too the Antiguan Labour Party and its leader, the Honourable Gaston Brown, the new Prime Minister on their electoral triumph. The region expects from comrade Gaston the continuation of excelling the sterling leadership which this magnificent country has experienced since independence through the iconic national hero, the right excellent Vicorn Worldbird, the Honourable Esther Bird and the Honourable Baldwin Spencer. In this moment of his electoral defeat, I salute Baldwin Spencer for his contribution to the regional integration movement. Antigua and Barbuda is blessed with quality leadership in both the government and the opposition. This fact augurs well for the country, the OECD, and CARICOM. In our Caribbean, we often take for granted the majesty and sanctity of the people's right to elect governments of their own choosing through free and fair elections. Only the aberration in Grenada in 1979 and the special circumstances from time to time historically in Guyana, Haiti and Suriname have blotted the impeccable record of free democratic choice in post-colonial times in every Caribbean country today. Governments come, they stay, or they go through the democratic imperative of regular mandated elections. In this regard, though we in the Caribbean, we in CARICOM, invite international observers to our elections as a matter of course, we truly do not need lessons from anyone in democracy, especially from those whose elections are prisoners of incumbency and money. To be sure, improvements in our electoral processes are necessary and desirable and we know what we must do to make better certain of their features. But no holier-than-thou hectaring by external powers and principalities is required. After all, no democratic government in our region has ever been chosen by a divination of a pregnant child or a hanging child or by a determination of a Supreme Court. I proclaim with near certainty that among CARICOM's principal socio-political exports of quality and quantity are democratic politicians and Christian evangelists. We have a lot of them. Lessons from elsewhere are vital, but I doubt that they are required in the areas of political democracy and Christian theology. Mr. Chairman, the current status of CARICOM can be characterized by the twin and dialectically connected processes of consolidation and progress within the terms of CARICOM's design as crafted in the revised treaty of Shagaramos of July 2001 and the subsequent decisions of the Conference of Heads and of other treaty institutions. At the outset, it is always important to remind everyone that CARICOM is a community of sovereign states cobbled together by a creative intergovernmentalism and not a supra-nationalism. In the entire CARICOM architecture, only the Caribbean Court of Justice, the CCJ, in its original compulsory and exclusive jurisdiction as the guardian of the revised treaty and the enforcer of community law is a supranational entity clothed with the authority to hold governments to account and to compel obedience. CARICOM is not a unitary state, not a federation, and not even a confederation. Thus, as a community of sovereign states, it constantly groups for consensus without a central executive mechanism and a legislative machinery like in the European Union. This is why it is left to the supranational CCJ to correct any implementation deficit within the scope of its jurisdiction as it has done in the Trinidad, cement, and Shanee Myrie cases. Still, we cannot expect the CCJ to perform miracles and fill the administrative, executive, and policy lacunae evident in the revised treaty. That is the fundamental business of the political directorate in the regional integration enterprise. This is our business. Despite the design limitations of CARICOM, its possibilities have borne fruit, even if unevenly, in its four articulated pillars of coordinated activities, namely functional cooperation, economic integration including trade, the coordination of foreign policy, and the combining of regional security initiatives. In each of these areas, much progress has been made over the past forty-one years of CARICOM's existence and especially so since the revised treaty some thirteen years ago. Still, there's much work to be done. Over the past six months of my chairmanship of CARICOM, consolidation and advance have been evident on several items of integration, including the following: the free movement of persons, especially since the Myrie judgment in October 2013, and we must thank the CCJ; the continued utilization by the private sector in CARICOM of the right of establishment so as to facilitate enhanced regional investment, job, and wealth creation; the relatively smooth working of the Free Trade Customs Union tariff and non-tariff arrangements and payment system in the single market; the improved coordination of the regional security apparatuses and between them and other friendly nations which have a vested interest in our region and hemisphere in fighting crime; the continued coordination of foreign policy despite some hiccups or episodes of dissonance; and the ongoing progress being made on a swath of functional integration subjects such as health, where Denzel Douglas has done such a magnificent job; education, culture, sports, the elderly, women, the youth, persons with disabilities, and social security. During the past six months too, it has been my pleasure to see Barbados chosen as the locale for the global launch of World Environment Day. Pleased to be a witness to the immense national, regional, and international achievements of several CARICOM member states in diverse areas including scientific research, education, tourism, and other productive endeavors, sports and culture, and diplomacy. It has been my pleasure too to celebrate quietly, noisily in some cases, the splendid achievements of numerous individual CARICOM citizens and firms and to watch and participate with countless pilgrims at prayer in joyful gratitude and heartfelt thanks to Almighty God for the bountiful blessings he has granted us in our region and for the amazing grace which he offers us always to lead us safely home. For those who say we have nothing to appreciate, that's quite a long list. That's quite a long list. The absence of a dramatic forward movement in CARICOM's affairs ought not to invite unwarranted criticism or a paralyzing cynicism. Neither must we fall prey to a smug satisfaction about consolidation and progress in the face of foot-dragging on some critical issues and an unacceptable implementation deficit on items upon which we have solemnly agreed. Mr. Chairman, colleagues, ladies and gentlemen, deeper integration beyond the single market and functional cooperation among countries which are predominantly resourced challenged islands faces obstacles not encountered by resource-rich nations in an economic union on a continental landmass. Islandness naturally produces an outward gaze enlarged by globalization, but it engenders too an intense inward look which the very external pressures mistakenly magnify among citizens, some citizens, to become an illusory localism or parochialism offered as a strategic option. Islandness. If you think that this only afflicts us, look at what happened in Britain and the European Union. Islandness is something very peculiar. Further, given the profound resource limitations of most member states of CARICOM and the unevenness of their resource endowments and socioeconomic development, the challenges attendant upon a deeper integration push are exacerbated. An ongoing economic slowdown worsens on the ground the condition for a deeper union. Yet, it is our very smallness, our islandness, our scarcity of resources, and the global economic downturn which necessitate a greater cooperative integration effort. So despite the challenges and the difficulties, those very things, these limitations in concert with our extant possibilities as largely middle-income developing countries ought more assuredly to prompt us to move faster towards a single economy and improved regional governance. In this venture, political leadership is vital. Our doubts must no longer detain us and we must ever more love and care for CARICOM for without it, despite its many false starts and disappointments, our people would be diminished in their quest to enhance in their own interest their capacity to address optimally the internal and exogenous challenges which beset them. In all these reflections, we must never forget CARICOM's accomplishments which constitute a part of the permanent landscape of our region's political economy. Sometimes when we make many steps forward and have so many advances and we have so many accomplishments, a lot of our people have amnesia and we become so accustomed to instant coffee and instant cocoa that if we don't get it now for now, it ain't progress. Well, leadership has to point these things out and explain. And competitive national politics doesn't mean that we have to be going at eaters throats on these matters. On all of these things, we should be working as one because it's past debate now that we have to deepen the integration movement, simple straightforward. We can have arguments about many details, but on that we ought not to have any argument. Mr. Chairman, colleagues, ladies and gentlemen, many important items for the ongoing CARICOM agenda are up for consideration at this Conference of Heads of State and Government. They include consideration and approval of the strategic plan for CARICOM 2015 to 2019, which the distinguished Secretary-General mentioned in his remarks; the report of the Commission on the Economy; the imminent coordination of CARICOM's policies on climate change and the post-2015 development agenda as they affect small island developing states and the conference upcoming in Samoa in September, a very important conference for us, for small island developing states; and update on the trade negotiations with Canada; the approval of the draft terms of reference and composition of the Regional Commission on Marijuana, a subject on which we must have a mature conversation; the advancing of the historic quest of reparations for native genocide and slavery; the review of the draft protocol for a special carve-out for the OECD in the context of the revised treaty of Shagaramos; the report of the Transport Commission; the consideration and approval of the terms of reference of the Commission on Human Resource Development, a matter being pushed by the distinguished Prime Minister of St. Kitz and Nevis; the Pan-Caribbean Partnership against HIV and AIDS, and that is an important subject for discussion. We have seen in the public domain a number of Christian organizations are wondering whether we are fighting this disease, this of HIV and AIDS, in the correct manner? Are we abandoning Christian principles in this particular battle and so on? And of course, there is also on the agenda a miscellaneous of other areas of functional cooperation. So you'd notice we have quite a handful to be doing over the next three days. Quite a lot of work and Gaston has to be on top of all this material in a very short period of time to help to guide the discussion. Mr. Chairman, colleagues, ladies, and gentlemen, one vital issue touching and concerning human rights in our region which must be kept on the front boner of CARICOM concerns the unacceptable denial of citizenship to persons of Haitian descent born in the Dominican Republic. The basic facts that have sparked the justifiable regional and international outrage on this matter are well-known and need no elaboration here. In late 2013, the CARICOM Bureau took a strong stance in demanding an appropriate corrective from the government of the Dominican Republic and the Bureau laid out a no-business-as-usual position in CARICOM's relations with the Dominican Republic. The Bureau's stance was reaffirmed at the intercessional meeting of the Conference of Heads of CARICOM in St. Vincent and the Grenadines in March 2014. Since then, the long-awaited Reform Law on Nationalization was enacted by the competent authorities in the Dominican Republic. This law has been rightly condemned regionally and globally as a not-so-clever smokescreen to conduct unsuspecting that a real reform has taken place. In reality, this so-called Reform Law covers only a miniscule proportion of those persons of Haitian descent who are arbitrarily de-nationalized. I urge my colleagues not to wobble on this issue and remain firm. It would be wrong to cave in to this unworthy sleight of hand by the authorities in the Dominican Republic. The persons of Haitian descent born in the Dominican Republic who have had their human rights abrogated or denied deserve CARICOM's continued support and it still cannot be business as usual with the Dominican Republic. I say this: the people of Haitian descent who have been denied citizenship in the Dominican Republic, they look to us to give voice to the denial of their human rights. Don't think that they look simply to Haiti. If it is a migration problem, they would look to Haiti, but this is not a migration issue of Haitians into the Dominican Republic. This is an issue of persons who are born in the Dominican Republic, of Haitian descent, who have been denied their citizenship. And as I speak to you, there are these persons who are nurses who are going to the hospitals. Some of them drive buses. Some are coming in from the fields, going to their homes. They don't have the sense of authority or power that we have. So we have to talk for them. I hear their concerns because our heard melodies are sweet but those unheard of these persons is sweeter and we must give voice and amplification to those unheard melodies. As we convene for this Conference of Heads, we must admit that there is genuine material hardship among huge sections of the region's population. We have to admit this. We can't hold this meeting as though we don't have a lot of people in the Caribbean suffering. For us to say otherwise would be untruthful. We have this genuine material hardship as a consequence of the global economic meltdown of September 2008 and continuing. The severe impact of several natural disasters, the still unresolved debacle of the collapse of the British-American insurance company and Clicoe, especially in the OECD's member states; the capital and liquidity challenges of many indigenous banks; the enormous fiscal overhang and correspondingly unsustainable debt-to-GDP ratios in most CARICOM countries. We have to watch the truth in its face and come to terms with it. Undoubtedly, this economic and fiscal conundrum demands continued urgent corrective action nationally and regionally. The conversation on these matters is at the top of the agenda. At this summit, national solutions are at best partial and a concerted regional approach is required to improve our economies, create wealth and jobs, and manage much better our fiscal and debt condition and strengthen the social safety net for those who are disadvantaged. The task ahead is not easy, but we must keep our focus accordingly. We have survived and thrived and gotten over far worse challenges. Our parents and grandparents have done so. Why are we worried about this? We must be fearful, face the challenges squarely and honestly. Civil society, including businesses and trade unions, must appreciate the continuing difficulties and act responsibly. There is no magic wand and the population who are out there who think that there is... I'm sorry to tell you, there is none. Hard, smart, and productive work has to be the preferred option over profligacy, leisure, pleasure, and nice time. Leisure, pleasure, and nice time. While it is wonderful, I love it. I love plenty of it. But somebody has to pay for it and if you don't work for it, you have to get it from somebody else voluntarily or you take it from them involuntarily. So we have to have smart, hard, productive work. All hands are required to be on deck, on deck. Facile solutions are but mirages. We must dig deep into the recesses of our Caribbean civilization to summon all that which is good and sensible in us as we go forward. I take heart in this matter from the book, the wisdom of the Book of Ecclesiastes. "He that observeth the wind will not sow." "He that observeth the wind will not sow." And "he that regarded the clouds..." and he that regardeth the clouds will not reap. In the morning, so decease; and in the evening withhold not thy hand; for thou knowest not which shall prosper, whether this or that, or whether they both shall be alike good." As I close, I thank on behalf of the community, the Secretary General, and the CARICOM Secretariat for their continued productive labors and devotion to duty in challenging circumstances and difficult times. It gives me great pleasure to pass the baton of chairmanship to my dear brother Gaston of Antigone Barbuda, our dear Prime Minister. Thank you very much.